As I mentioned, we have four items on the agenda tonight. I'll start by introducing the board. On my left over here is Fred Keem, Terry Teaseack, Iron Elias, and Randy Bogart. Our recording secretary is Dory Shaw, John Machos, and Lenora Mirat. Our coach enforcement officer is with us tonight, Joe Booth. Crown attorney Herb Cully is here. And from the town board, Dave Reynolds is with us as well. As I mentioned, we have, and Karen Stanislaw is in the parking lot, so she'll be in in one minute. As I mentioned, we have four items on the agenda tonight. And I'll have Dory read the application. And each person can come up to the table here. Bring with you anything that you think is pertinent to your particular application, whether it's letters of support, pictures, diagrams, anything that you think is going to make your case. At that point, the board will probably have some questions of you. And then we'll open it up. The audience may have some questions on a particular application. And what I would ask is that you direct any questions rather than to each other, to the board. Okay? Welcome. And Karen is with us. So with that said, I'll have Dory read the first application.
Okay. The application is Mr. Frank Christiano for property located at 3899 O'Niner Street, Washington Mills, with his Thomas Peasal. Mr. Christiano is seeking a quantity area variance for 39 parking spaces. He's expanding his building by 870 plus or minus square feet. The site is already 39 parking spaces efficient.
Welcome.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Not too bad. I guess I'm coming up with one problem, but maybe you can solve another one for me. I wanted to, I have that 800 square feet of outdoor patio space that really doesn't earn me any money, so I wanted to turn it into something that I could produce a revenue from. So I came up with the idea of creating a 24-seat barbecue addition onto this room that I have in Washington Mills. That's what I went to Mr. Booth, just to find out the idea of, you know, being short parking numbers. And then he said, well, apply for the meeting here. I guess in my recent vacation to Charleston South Carolina, I've changed the idea of what I'd like to do. I still like to enclose that patio area and attach it to the rest of the building and open it up and create a gourmet candy shop. Reason being is to change my mind is cost of labor and chocolate doesn't spoil. At least not for me. That's the thing. So I have a multitude of families that come in, sporting teams that come in. So the whole time with a pizza and cake candy party seems a little bit more logical, at least to me right now. So I don't need any seats. I want to open it up, I apologize.
No, I'm gonna ask the chairman the question soon as you're finished.
Oh, okay. But I don't need, I guess, a variance for parking because I don't need to add on any tables there to create more parking spaces with seats needed. But I was coming in here to see if there was a possibility of changing the zoning for the parking designation to maybe a shopping center designation. And the reason being, I could put that out there, is that the parking is so rotational, I'm never full. The only time I've been full there in the last, I don't know how long we've been there, 15 years, is when the ride for missing children, when Valentinos was a sponsor, and they would hold their meetings there. That was an outstanding situation. But I've never really been to full capacity. The other tenants, there are six tenants there, they're all on rotational timeframes. Most of them are done by four o'clock. I have a hair salon that's by appointment. I have a bakery, a back cellar, first bakery that by 2:00 P.M. they're done as well. Valentinos is a once every week or two function place. So I'm the only person that's open there, well, it's 24/7, about 8:00 AM till midnight. So the designation change to shopping center would increase my spaces and I would have an abundance of almost 40 spaces.
Joe, did you answer that?
I think what Mr. Christiano's saying, Fred, is that the parking requirements for a shopping center are much more lenient. The way his parking is calculated, he never got approved as a shopping center, although he needs to try to carry out a shopping center. He's over 10,000 square feet, he's got multi-boost tenants there. And he actually included two tenants that aren't on the same parcel. Your bakery and your beauty salon are not on the same parcel, so they wouldn't come into play. But the other tenants are. If he granted the shopping center designation, his parking would be more in line with the current.
Well, what's it called now, Joe?
It's not. It's individual, it was assessed individually, it was assessed as a bank facility, a restaurant, an office. And each one of those spaces go off to the gross floor area, which jags up the parking requirements.
So they're multiple uses on the one parcel?
Correct.
When he got his site plan, what did he get approved as?
Just what you see, a restaurant, two restaurants, office space, all individually. They never called it a shopping center or designated it as such because when they thought shopping center, they thought New York or shopping center, they thought Saint Peter Mall or whatever. But technically, it does need to be a shopping center.
A small shopping center.
A small shopping.
It's a C2.
It is. So it's a permitted use.
I have a question, can I answer it if I may? With the public notice that you put out, there was certainly not inquiry about an outdoor patio or beauty shop, but we're changing here midstream, does that violate any by code?
Well, he's not asking you for a variance. He's permitted to put the candy shop there.
Right.
Because he's not having the restaurant with the tables, that's why he needed the variance on the parking. So he doesn't need the variance, he's just asking the question of how he would be converted to a shopping center. And I think it's probably an amendment to site plan.
Yeah.
With the plan, I think it's a one needing to deal.
Well, I guess that's my bottom line.
Yeah, he's not asking you for anything.
Right. Well, what do we consider here?
Nothing. He doesn't need anything.
So you're just talking about property down in the back, not along United Street where Ole Miss is?
Correct. No, it's just the pizzeria in the back.
It's just off the road. Tony's and then the...
Correct. As soon as you drive in and you see the Tony sign, I have two decks, one on the left, one on the right. One on the right is the one I'm looking at most.
On the right, okay. But then there's a building to the right, separated from Tony's.
Correct.
That's separate buildings.
They're two tenants.
Security company and...
San Luis's Utility Court.
Yeah, but you're not talking about any of them here.
Nope.
Okay. All right, I understand.
I think Joe makes a good point, is that we have to go to the planning board.
Planning board, yeah, sure.
And set that up with them and get a tour of them.
I was coming in, if you might, I gotta show off. Yeah, yeah. Listen, I told you, vacation does things to the mind, so I appreciate it. I mean, it takes up your time, I appreciate it.
You mean candy shop is the thing to do?
Candy shop. Well, it seems, I don't need more pizza in there, I don't need more, but what can I put in there that'll actually sell on the track?
Chocolate.
Pastry, escapes, desserts, games, you know, so now I can tie in with people that are actually coming in. So I'll make it visible and close it and have a little more space.
Is it an individual business?
It'll be tied in, so they'll be able to see it from the inside of the building as they walk in, so they can counter, look to the right hopefully, and they'll see something. If not, I'll stick it right in front of the faces as they walk in.
So what?
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Hey, we're gonna change the agenda up a little bit. We're gonna take the application of Mrs. Barbara Risbanti, 8121 Seneca Turnpike, from New York. It's the town of Hartford. Corner of Seneca Turnpike and Homestead Road. The applicant wishes to install a garage 30 feet plus or minus past the front of her home or garage side, 21 feet plus or minus from the front property line. The front yard setback is 57 feet plus or minus from Homestead Road West. The applicant is seeking a 30-foot plus or minus front yard area variance.
Welcome.
Which I think some of the authors have pictures, I think they've got aerial view there, sketch. I don't think I have enough.
Does it just pass this around or?
Sure, she does have it in there. I got it on the side, so.
The garage is gonna be here?
No. The garage will be in the back.
Or is it, it's not gonna be attached?
No, it's not. It's gonna be a detached garage. As you can see, right now, if you look at aerial view, the cars, that's very in sight. We have them in the garage or they can be stored. Right now, in the winter, we put them up for storage, and the summer, it's how it looks in the summer.
What are we looking at here? What is this?
That is the garage I'd like to put up.
Is it three-stall?
It's actually four. It's one on each end, and that is a double end.
Oh, okay, the double in the middle, okay. I'm sure what's part of it here.
Yeah, where is it that you want?
Well, I should have looked at it. Right in here. I'm not sure if you're, in your paperwork, there is a little survey, I'm not sure if it's in there. There you go. The survey, it looks like the proposed, proposed garage.
So it's gonna be 44 feet wide by 24 feet deep?
Yes.
Can you, I guess, can you just, I see this picture here, so just to make sure I understand, where is the pool, but could you come over and just point it out or take a, I hope? Would you just draw it where, about where you want?
There's a draw in there.
Yeah, there's it right here.
No, but I wanna see it on the over.
Oh, on the over here.
The aerial, yeah. You don't have to be perfect.
Right in here.
And where are you gonna put the driveway to get to it?
Well, right now...
It looks like it'll be facing this way.
Right, it'll be facing this way. And what we're putting in here are cars that will not even move in the winter.
Right.
Using it basically for storage, for lawn and patio equipment also.
Yeah, so when you drive in here?
Probably over here. I have a shed right here.
Yeah, I kinda saw that.
I'm gonna remove that and take that down. And I was thinking just very narrow, just enough for cars, just to kinda, because I don't wanna disturb the rest of my lawn, so I wanna kinda just keep it to the side and just come up.
Gotcha.
And I don't know if you can tell, all my property is surrounded.
By trees.
By trees.
Yeah, that doesn't help as much as something.
And there is a fence in the back.
How many cars do you think you'll be able to get in there? You wanted, you said you wanted to put pool supplies and stuff in there.
Well, I was thinking three, three stalls.
For the cars?
And one for pool equipment.
Three stalls would be, you're not gonna double up the cars, are you, just three cars?
Right, and there's the garage in the middle with over two cars.
And then the one on the street side for the other car, and then the one on the other side for the pool stuff.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
I noticed there's like several cars in this aerial picture.
Yes.
Are they all family-owned, or is there a business going on there or something?
No, no, it's not a business. In fact, the garage, there wouldn't be any repairing, it's just storage. Yeah, this, the family cars, my husband and son like their cars and...
There's a couple of replaced tires there too.
Yeah.
Real old tires, right?
I don't know, remember that?
Yeah, I liked your carpet, yes.
Yeah, I was there today also, and I'm just, I was concerned about the entrance tonight too. So basically, you are gonna come in through this area?
Oh, yeah, we come in through this area.
Right.
The same way, and we can see that you're...
I'm sorry.
Here.
Right in through here.
She put the line on, well, I put the line, but she...
And there's a pool there.
Yeah, yes, that's why I can't put a garage in the back of the house because of the...
Is there anybody that's here on this particular application?
I've got a question. Today, I mean, you've been without the garage all this time. What has changed to install a four-stall garage?
The number of cars.
So the number of cars have changed.
Yes.
And that's why. I mean, are these vintage cars, or are they...
Yes, three of them are classic cars. And then the two we keep in our house garage, those are very new, but they're also just cars we used in the summer.
So up until this point, you've stored them someplace?
Yes, the past few years, we've stored them in the winter. And then in the summer, they, it looks like that. And a view, low profile, so I wanted to blend it and dress it up.
And we'll be doing any body work or mechanical work in there, you're just gonna use it for storage?
Right.
It looks like the garage, you're gonna carry the same...
Same siding.
Same colors and that.
Yep.
The yard was fixed.
Thank you.
Everything's very well, the tulips, the whole thing.
Oh, you see?
I was the snoop that you called the cops on.
Last week or this week? It was last Monday or this Monday?
This Monday.
That was the one last Monday.
That was the one this Monday.
The deer had field day on some of my trees this year.
I think I understand it now. Thank you for drawing your picture.
Any other questions for the application?
No, no, I think that's, I asked my question.
Fred? Karen?
I'm okay.
All right? Okay? John?
Yeah. I'm looking at, I'll tell you what, you can probably get a flare truck all around here or something right here. And everything's so well hidden, you have to stop and get out of your car and walk around.
I do have another question, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at the property here, and I gotta ask this question just for the record. Is there any other way that you can install what your needs are on your large piece of property without infringing on any of the variance?
Large piece of property, whereabouts and...
Well, I'm talking about your piece of property. Is there any other location that you can take that and place it without infringing on the town zone?
I don't see any. In fact, I kept, tried to keep it as close off of this road here as I could by putting it here. I can't do anything really in the front.
Yeah.
How far on the other side from where the pool is to the line over on that side?
I couldn't be able to really get in the back.
This is your front of the house, am I correct?
Yes.
That's the way I saw it. I was in here probably early this morning, about 11:00 I thought. I was just trying to get it over you. I didn't get out of the car, I just wanted to make sure that I was at the right house. But it looks like you do have a lot of property here. What's the size of your lot? Probably you can see it on the map there.
I, I...
She's got, she's trying to calculate that?
2.3 acres. No, no, wait a minute. She's got, I want to see that.
An half acre?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow. I think that's bigger than half acre. That's an interesting property. I definitely would say it's bigger.
I don't know. That's why I was trying to get an idea of the landmass, with the pool and the house and the trees. By the way, you guys have...
It's 150 in the back.
91 on the front.
91 on the front.
196 and 161.
I had to ask a question, observe something.
Basically, corner lot is what's causing the problem.
Yeah, she's got two corners, corner on the front, corner on the...
I don't have any more questions.
No, I'm, she's, they're not gonna fix cars, they're not gonna be from a body shop or a mechanical garage, it's basically for storage.
We'll open this up. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? No? Okay. We did get a call. Oh. And then we did get a New York State DOT, no issue, and United County Department of Planning with no recommendations. Okay, we'll close comments. Fred?
I don't have a problem with it. It fits in the area. I don't think it's gonna be that big an issue in favor.
You want comments, or you want thoughts?
Yeah.
I just think the application is too large with a four-stall garage that'd be put on for that piece of property. And I don't really see a hardship there. One of my questions, what has changed? And obviously, we did store cars, now we're not storing cars. My personal opinion at this point, and I'll just hold back until we vote, but I just, I'm looking at the landmass compared to the house, the pool, and the four-stall garage.
I kinda agree with Carrie on this one. I hate to say it, but I, it's just a large, it's about three-quarters or a little less than an acre, but it is quite a, it's quite a structure to put in there, in that back corner.
John, any comments?
I've been sort of in a situation that you're in right now. When you've got a couple of class of cars, if you store them somewhere else, then you might go off for a ride or something, it gets to be a real hassle. And if you got the room, and I was fortunate enough to have the room, I just put another, had another garage on the side of my house. But because I know how people are, and only vehicles like that, I don't think they're ever gonna see junk around there or anything. And the way that's built, with the trees around it, you can almost ride by it, probably not even know it's there. I'm not saying...
I agree.
You know? Because maybe she goes stall in front, stall in back, they can just two stalls wide, and, you know, they can four-bay with one behind the other. I really, and like I say, I'm partial to something like this, so, you know? And I'm looking at it like, you know, if it was, this is so well screened, you'd never even know it's there.
That's too bad.
And there's nobody, and there's nobody in the area anyways that is here in this room that is totally against it. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be junk here. I mean, just take a look at the property now.
No, I agree.
Probably, probably if anything, sees them on a road, probably if anything, it'll be much neater when they're done, because when you start parking on your garage and stuff like that, and they aren't parking a real nice cars on there, all your cars are nice to what I can see, but not like the older ones. And they pull out on a road, you're getting mud tracks, all stuff on your driveway, and then it's going on on a road, so if you're asking me, I agree with you. In this particular one, I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem. I mean, we could ask, does it need to be four-stall? Could it go down, could it be made smaller? But I don't believe that they're infringing on anything that's gonna be substantial to anyone else. And she's trying to make her property, you know, conducive to what they're using it for. And when any one of us buys a piece of property, I think we would like to, you know, be able to do that as long as you're within. And it isn't so concealed that I don't see where it would be a problem.
And the shed on the property will be coming down on the corner. I don't know if you've seen that.
I agree, I agree with Lenora and John. I, because it's so, it's so sheltered, you know, it's so, it's its own, its own little world in there. And I don't feel that it presents any problem to anyone in the neighborhood. I'm not gonna think to see it really.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned with the size. And I looked, and when I saw it, I said, wow, that's an awful big, that's an awful big, it's 24 by 44. That's an, and four stalls, so it's awful big, so I am very concerned about that. I hear what you're saying, where it's gonna be, and it's kinda out of sight because you have the trees along the road there, but I'm still concerned about the side, the size of it. And, you know, concerned about as we, as we go forward here, there's this, you know, the next one that comes, are you gonna say, oh, okay, we're gonna put up the 24 by 44 also, or we should go ahead and approve that one too? I know we take each one individually and consider all the facts on that, I understand that, but I'm just concerned on the size on this one. So I think that we should take a look at the...
Can I give one more comment?
Absolutely.
When you pull up there at first, if you looked in the driveway...
You thought it was there?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I thought it was built without a permit, and I was gonna say, oh, no, when you pull up in front and look down their driveway, looking at this picture, it almost looks like it was on the drive, it's already there. And I sat there looking, and I said, no, it can't be. And then I went around the corner, started looking around, saw a pool and stuff, and I, you know what? You could ride back here all day long, not seriously.
That's my only concern with the trees, is if something happens to them, they get cut down, then we're gonna have a pretty, we're gonna have a pretty big block.
Well, we already, we already had some trees that we took down and we replaced.
Yeah, there's no doubt that it's gonna be very nice and very well done. It's just, it's a pretty big structure.
I'm willing, if I can, even if I had to bring it in a little bit, it'd be three-stall. I'm willing to do that, but...
I'd feel much more comfortable with three stalls, if that's what you're saying.
What's that?
I would definitely feel much more comfortable with three stalls, for me.
It's not gonna be that much different, but if you look, it looks three-stall, except for the... Right, I do, I do wanna address your comment with the trees, though. That is any property in Hartford that has the trees, that anyone, the deers would ever take down. Any homeowner would be at that, at the mercy of those trees coming down. And there's a lot of property that you might not wanna look into if those trees come down.
That's a good point.
That's true.
So let's take a look at the criteria. Whether the benefit can be achieved by or that means feasible to the applicant. I would say yes, because what they've done in the past is the storage has been off-site.
Just in the winter.
No, I understand.
Just in the winter.
Yeah, that's the part we're talking about.
It's a hardship, what you're saying. They have to go drive someplace else to get the cars.
Leave my car there and swap stuff around, you know?
How does I ever change an air duct or anybody's properties?
No.
Why did they request a substantial?
To me, it's...
Description.
I think that it is. It's a big, it's a four-stall garage.
Well, what her request is, she's putting in a four-stall garage, but what her request of what she needs.
Yeah.
It's still substantial sizewise.
Are they saying, Laura?
Her, the request for the variance, for the footage of the variance, is that substantial? Or are you saying the garage is substantial?
The size. I think the size is substantial.
No, I think Laura's got a point.
No.
Because nine feet at this corner, so what's, what are we looking for? It's supposed to be ten, what's that, a one foot, and then the front here is 30?
That's what I'm saying, the version of variances.
Yeah, right. I think you're right.
So you're saying the garage is...
It could be 80 something.
It could be, we're not talking about the size of the structure she's putting on, we're talking about the size of the variance she's requesting.
So let me ask a question, Joe. I don't know if you ran the numbers as far as the square footage. How much is, is on the property now? And how much this would add to it? 25%, isn't it?
She's not even close. It's not even close. Yeah, we're looking, I changed what I said based on what, you're right. I'm, I, I think it's a big garage, but I...
It is a big garage. That's what I'm saying, is that it's a big garage, it's on a big piece of property, but we're thinking about...
Yeah, you're right, right.
But the size creates a variance problem.
Well, if she said it back farther...
Well, that's why I asked. If there was another location...
But the pool's the way to do it.
Right.
I mean, go around the backside. I know, if there wasn't a corner lot, she wanted it to be here.
She should be putting her backyard basically.
Yeah.
Exactly, yes.
And you know what? Nobody in the neighborhood is here complaining against it.
There's no way it's affecting anybody.
What's that?
I changed my line, I don't think it's a big...
It's not done yet.
But I was, I was on, yes.
He's still going down the question.
And I'm trying to change my...
But it must have been understood from my other facts. I don't think so.
No, I don't, I didn't say no.
But if I should probably self-creation.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with self-creation.
With that said, let's go and make a motion.
I'll make the motion, you bet.
Second?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Nate? We're all set. Let's see Joe before, let's see Joe before you start to get a building ready.
Oh, yes.
Okay? Good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much for your thing.
If we want, do we get a test ride one of their cars?
Sure.
It'll be a relax, it'll be a rush.
He's a baker, responding to bakeries.
Ma'am?
Brad.
My dad was the founder. I'm twenty-nine years.
Okay, the application is BP Supply Corporation, forty-six seventy-six Commercial Drive, New Hartford. The applicant is applying for usage variance to install a large-scale, more than ten kilowatt solar system. Schedule B permitted uses does not allow for large-scale solar system.
That was a good discussion there last one. Wasn't it? That's why we gotta run the board.
Hi.
Hello.
How you doing? My name is Mark Vouli, I'm the CFO at BP Supply Corp., this is Jay Ditas and Steve Riggle, they also work for BP Supply. These guys are the experts in solar, and my most, uh, my objective was to facilitate the filing of the use variance, and, you know, provide the information that was requested on the documentation.
And thank you for taking the time to, to see us today, we do appreciate it, so.
Or you gentlemen?
My name's Jay Ditas, and I work at BP Supply in the Renewal Energy Division.
Jay, and I'm Steve Riggle, and you're the same.
Yeah.
Do you have cards, gentlemen?
I do, actually.
Both of you?
Where's the food in your leg?
I was come see me with your name.
Yeah, no, I, I just had surgery, um, and I had to have my ACL replaced.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Thank you, thank you. Actually, last time I was doing, this is my second time in, in a year.
The way you made that presentation, I thought you were on Shark Tanks.
Do you need a chair, do you wanna sit down there?
Uh, I need the exercise, so thank you though.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Pass those down, I need my business card. Uh, might you want to pop that computer down here a little? So, just to give you a little bit of background, and I'll keep this brief, because I know you, you submitted the documentation, so I don't wanna waste your time. We applied for a permit, and, uh, it was, I think we paid, and this is just recollection, somewhere around four, it was like twelve hundred to seventeen hundred dollars, something in that range. We were issued a permit by Tom Loenin.
Well, that's him.
And, uh, then we, we commenced our operation to install solar. And just to give you an idea of where we're looking to put it, um, is everyone here familiar with where BP Supply is located on that road?
Yes. One look at it.
Okay, so there are, there are three main structures to BP Supply there, there's the main storefront in the very front, and there are two storage buildings in the back, uh, that are blocked pretty much by the, the main building in the front. And, uh, we're looking to install solar on the south-facing roofs of the two warehouse buildings in the back of the property. And, um, just to give you an idea here, this is, I don't know if you can see it.
How many square footage between those, uh, are you gonna put on, how many square footage panels between those two roofs?
Uh, let's see here, that's a great question, each panel.
Would it help us if we dim the lights a little, or everybody could see it?
I think with the angle of the lights-
Two hundred and forty-two panels.
Yeah, two forty-two, and they're about, two hundred and forty-two, it's like thirty-six hundred square feet.
Okay, between the two buildings?
Between the buildings, yes.
The buildings are both approximately the same size?
Uh, no, the, the one building here you can see is quite a bit longer than the other one. And, uh, so this is the, the uppermost building, so if you're facing BP Supply from the road,
Yes.
the uppermost building on the left-hand side in the back, and, uh, this would be on the far side of it, so you can only see a small corner of that building from the road front, and-
From, or from, from Commercial Drive?
Yeah, from Commercial Drive, and the part of the building you can see is the north side of the building, so our panels would go on the other side, so you couldn't see them at all.
What's the power being supplied to? The main, or is it gonna be going to the other buildings, or?
So we tie it into the main service that comes into BP Supply at that location, and it's, we're doing it to offset the, the electric consumption.
I understand, you know, the-
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
My question would be, is are you gonna supply power to all three buildings, or one building, the main building?
Yeah, so what, the way the power comes in that building, the main power supply comes into the storefront,
Right.
in the, in the very front, the front building there.
Right.
And then the power is tapped off that to the other two buildings.
The other two buildings.
So we're-
This would be the-
Yeah, so this is-
Are you gonna be able to generate enough electricity from those panels to, uh, to do that?
Yeah, so the, the, the premise was to offset a hundred percent of our usage at that location.
Okay, we'll, we'll exceed it, and then just send it back into the grid.
So, we're trying to be what we call net zero.
Yes.
Um, so in the summertime, actually, we're gonna overproduce.
Okay.
And then in the wintertime, we're gonna underproduce, so during that overproduction time, we build up a credit on our bill, and then we buy it back in the wintertime for the same rate that we sold it in fourth.
I've got another quick question here, it says to install a large-scale, more than ten solar system. What scale is the size are you planning to put in there, when you say a large scale?
So, the-
Bring that down to my language, because I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, that makes sense, so there's, just to put it in perspective, there's, a ten KW system is around ten thousand watts, and, uh, we're looking to put in fifty-five thousand watts, so large scale-
Five times as much then?
Yeah, so-
If my math is right.
Correct. So, and the other thing to put in perspective is at my house, I use, I have a twenty KW solar array at my house, and that's to offset a residential application, so.
Yeah, some of the cases that we have before us were to subsidize some of the certainly not used, I think what you do is you take your utility bills, and you divide it by some factor, and it comes out how much of fifty-five thousand KW is gonna actually supply. Have you done that calculation, can you give us that information? Is it gonna be more than half, is it gonna be three quarters?
So from, from, on that building there, that would cover a hundred percent of our usage.
A hundred percent?
Yes, that's correct. So we're trying to be, our company distributes renewable energy products, and we're trying to be competitive in landscape and, and reduce our electrical consumption. So it's kind of a, a twofold application where we're, we're trying to, uh, lower the cost of our electric usage at that location, uh, keep us competitive in the marketplace.
Sure.
And then also, um, to do the environmentally, um, you know, conscious thing for, for what our business model is.
Then I would come back to you and ask you why, obviously you've done some calculations to get a hundred percent factor in there. Would you back off a little bit if we kind of looked at this, and you're going five times as much? Why not three times as much?
Well, so it's-
Is your intention to try to get a hundred percent replacement?
Yeah, so we're trying to offset a hundred percent zero, yeah.
I'm sorry to say, I'm not gonna interrupt you.
Yeah, I know.
So it's gonna be a plus side in the summer, and a minus side in the winter, that's gonna balance it.
Oh, is that true?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, so right now, from now on-
I wanted him to say it, well.
Yeah, from now on-
The way I, when you said it to me, that's why I interpreted.
All right.
Yeah, and from now, from now until, um, um, about October, September, October, we're gonna be, uh, overproducing what we're using, and then in the wintertime, we underproduce, so at the end of the year, a full billing cycle, it's a zero, it's zeroed out.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time.
And it kind of, if I'm, if I may add to that,
Sure.
um, why, why did we go fifty-five thousand watts? At the time, we applied for the permit, we were unaware that there was a cap of ten thousand watts, uh, a limit, limitation here in, within this, this zoning area. So after we obtained the permit, we went and bought all the materials for it, and then we also had our roof replaced.
So you could support it?
Correct. So we spent, we've actually spent money on the materials, um, we spent money on, uh, on the roof replacement. And, uh, so we actually have those materials sitting in our warehouse.
I'm gonna ask one more question, I'm sorry, this is interesting to me, and I know it's a-
No, I'm happy to help.
We think it's very interesting. I'm sure the councilman also thinks it's very interesting. The question I have is, you've done some calculations, and it seems like you guys are very brilliant, and understand what you're doing here, but if you followed, if you followed our laws today, what kind of benefit would a ten KW give you? We know fifty-five would be-
Monetarily, or?
That is correct.
Okay, um, yeah, just to give you a ballpark.
Why should it stay within the law?
If, if you did ten thousand watts?
Yes.
Okay, so ten thousand watts. I mean, you, you produce around a thousand dollars, just, it's easy math, around a thousand dollars savings.
About a thousand dollar savings?
Yes, a thousand is twelve hundred bucks, and if you get fifty-five thousand watts, it'd be about fifty-five hundred dollars.
All right. All right.
That's, that's the math, you did it before the fight.
Yeah.
I have a question, is your, you were granted a, uh, permit-
Correct.
A while back, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, so, no, thank you.
Well, well, go ahead.
We were granted the permit.
Right.
Um, and we, it took a little while to get, get the materials, and then get the roof re-done.
That's what took so long.
Yep, and then, um, then it fell in the wintertime, we didn't feel like we were rushed, so we, we were, um, we were just taking our time to get it done, when the conditions were good, and, uh, and then we were work-stopped.
The permit runs for a year.
Correct.
And it says it right on the face of the permit, that it's only good for a year, and once that year runs, it's, uh, it's no good.
That's correct.
So you got the permit, but you, you have to come here for a variance, you've gotten the permit.
Correct, yeah, so we did, yeah.
So the, the only thing that's jumping out at me right now is the use variance, and we have a harder criteria to follow for use variance as opposed to area variance, so, um, I see there's financials here, that I might not be understanding all of it, if you could, John, were you able to show that financially you couldn't do it any less on a, on a smaller scale?
I, I think to expound on that, the first question on your use variance application is reasonable return. And what it says is that if subject property is not capable of yielding a reasonable rate of return if used for its present use, or developed, redeveloped, or used for any other use permitted in the district in which such property is located, there is no means other than the granting of the variance by which the property can yield a reasonable return. Such inability, and I think this is what Nora is asking you, such an ability to yield a reasonable return must be shown by specific fact, dollars and cents from an expert or authority in economic deprivation, not the unsupported opinion of the owner or those appearing for the owner, so I think she's asking you what financial data in terms of tax reports, uh, financial statements, uh, reports from financial experts or authorities have you provided to show that you can't yield that reasonable return?
So I'm gonna defer to the CFO.
Because we may think it's a good idea, and understand everything you're saying, to be on the same page, but the criteria that we would have to follow, so that we-
Yeah, we, just so you know, that was, uh, I didn't really know how to respond to the, that question in the framework that it's established, because I just thought that we were, probably didn't fit that questionnaire as well. And just the way it all evolved was, we initially got a permit to build this solar system for the size that we're looking to do. So we made commitments financially on that, where we did buy the materials for it, we, we still have them stored, they're still sitting in storage, and as a result of that, um, you know, we also borrowed money to finance the, the balance of that. So we incurred that, we're paying down the debt with a understanding that we were gonna get a return on this investment in, uh, savings from the electric. So that's the financial, uh, information that I provided.
Oh, did you provide the loan statements, tax returns, and such as that?
No, because I don't see how-
The statements?
No, because, again, this is specific to this case only, and that's what we provided, because the way it evolved and the way it-
Because you didn't think you needed to be here?
Pardon me?
Because you thought you didn't need to be here for the variance, because you had the permit?
Initially.
That was our initial, so we, we still had, we still had time left over within that, the permit time, to finish the project, and we were, we were issued a work stop within that timeframe, so we, we were unaware that we'd have to be even applying for, for a variance at all.
So was the work stop within the one year?
It was.
It was?
It was, that is correct.
I guess I don't follow the timeline.
So what, so what, just so you're aware, we, we applied for the permit, um-
In fourteen.
Correct.
According to your-
And then we had a year to do it, and then, um, we, we were gonna get, we were, we actually, Steve actually called to ask if we could have extra time to put it in, so we could, we could put it in when the conditions were more favorable.
Sure.
And at that point, we were said, no, you have one year to finish it, so we went, okay, we'll get, we'll get on it within that year period, and then we were issued a work stop.
Yeah, but then it was in fifteen, this is the second.
Correct, so from that period on, we've been trying to, to, we've, we've had some discussions back and forth with Mr. Booth, and we've been, uh, trying to figure out the best way to apply, because this, it was hard for us to figure out a way to make this sort of application, to get in front of you, basically. We weren't, we weren't quite sure how to approach it, uh, to get your ear through this.
We were trying to fit into, you know, your use variance rules and so forth.
I think this came up once before about the solar system, with it being a use variance, and, right?
And we researched that, talked to the state, they said it's a use variance in the area.
But it still isn't really clear, it's not an easy one.
So we, you know, we were just having a hard time trying to figure out how to get in, how to get in front of you, and, because we really didn't fit into the confines of that document, you know, why we're applying, because we, we had issued, been issued the permit, we'd done some, you know, uh, acquiring, some work and acquiring some materials and, and so forth, so that's, that's why it took so long to get here.
The estimated cost back in November third, two thousand and fourteen, it says estimated cost a hundred seventy-five thousand, what's that?
That's the total, total cost of the installation of the, the materials and all the labor associated with the completion of that project.
Based on a fifty-five KW?
Yes.
A KW, all right, and also the fees were a thousand eighty-six, am I correct? That's what it says here.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Have, have you been refunded that money?
We have not.
So the application, I just, I read it as a great question, is this application even valid at this time? Because it's been continuous from fourteen, November fourteen to November third of seventeen would be three years, so back and off six months, so it's still a half years old.
And that's why he made a new application.
Well, are you making it?
The other one's old.
Yeah, well, I thought he was saying that-
This is a new one, because that was a-
No, he got the staff work from the first, he had a com, because of the staff work, he's here, he was never before us.
Right.
Before tonight. We were unaware that-
We're, we're here to ask you to reconsider.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so please-
Do you have anything that you could add to?
Yeah, this is puzzling.
It is a little bit puzzling.
No.
Just so you know, we struggled to apply our situation to the parameters.
Okay. In most cases, use variances are for use.
Exactly, that's why-
Our code describes small scale and large scale, our permitted use section only allows small scale, hence the use variance. They're going to a large scale.
Well, going back to November third, two thousand and fourteen, this was approved.
The permit was issued in there.
Oh, it was?
The ordinance was less than six months old, it was pissed, and Jim Rollins didn't realize that there was a limit on ten K. They had called to renew the permit, and it's when I had to look at it, said, wait a minute.
So when did they call to renew?
I think you should have.
There's no documentation there.
It was a few days before the expiration.
So everyone comes before us with solar panel questions, anything larger than ten, they need a use variance.
Correct.
And were we going to look into that, was, huh?
The town board is looking into it.
Right, that's what I thought, from one of the other-
Sorry, you have any documentation of any extension, any phone calls from these folks here, or from any communications from either Tom Rollins or anybody else about the extension?
No, they, uh-
As I see them, under the sunside-
I give them the call.
What?
If they're in the office, if Joe or Tom is on the call, and in the office, I give the call right to them.
Official paperwork there, but we don't have it at our disposal.
Okay, so there is?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good, so that's fine.
So, we're, we're, we're asking to please be considered to allow us to, to finish that, the work that we started, and, uh, you know, just from our standpoint, you, you can't see it from really a public place, um, you know, the main, the main front edge of the road is blocked by the main portion of the building, and then the side property is also blocked by the, uh, the strip malls out there, so you, you know, provided that someone actually is going to go find the solar array out there, I'm not sure anyone even knew it was out there.
So they're only gonna be on the roof, there're not gonna be any standalone panels?
No, no, no.
So it, really, okay.
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Okay. How old are, how old are them buildings that we're talking about, putting them roof panels in?
Um, I couldn't tell you, we did a structural analysis of them.
And they're, they're sturdy enough to carry the panels?
We haven't made any analysis.
They refurbished the roofs, both of them.
Well, when they refurbished the roofs, they put metal roofing on it, and it looks great, they're all random, and usually you do that, so the snow's not out like that.
That's one of the things that was checked.
Oh, okay, well, hey, you know, I get a little spooky once in a while.
No, no, I mean, that's-
Then like you say, you can't see it from the, yeah, okay, so what's on, but once in a while, okay? If I just happen to be in a neighborhood and there's something going on there, and I'll say if I was in Hartford Fire Mountain, we had a call there, and I've been zipping around there, you don't know what's on that roof, at night, you can't tell if solar panels are not, they don't reflect, they don't light up, and if there's two, three inches of snow, they're up there. This is why I'm asking these questions, because if the weight of it comes down, or even if the weight doesn't come down, and like- the weight doesn't come down and like the gentleman one of them just says, well, you won't even see them, that's just it, you won't see them and unless they're flagged or they're marked, you don't even know they're there and you can get killed real quick with them. Are they reported to the fire department? They should be, they should be reported. Question is, are they reported? I have no idea. Well, you being a fireman, I thought maybe. I have no idea. Because, and I'm saying this in a very serious note, if you get up on top of that roof not knowing what you're going to and all of a sudden if the power's not shut off and you're trying to put an axe through it. You can get knocked out of your butt.
So just so you're aware, the current code, the NEC code that we're in compliance with for this time, every solar array has to have a fire protection disconnect so that, and they're, they're clearly marked. So when you go to the building and says, this is a dual power source building, second power source is photovoltaic and you can disconnect it at that location for a fire disconnect.
Well, because you'd have the same issue if it's just a ten K or nine point eight K and the firemen goes there at that.
You better hope somebody's there at two in the morning.
Well, so the other. The other thing is, just so you're, just to, we do a structural analysis by an engineer, so we have an engineer review all of our.
I know you said that when you started, but I was looking at the brand new roof and I was saying, they put a brand new roof on there so that you could, put the panels on there and carry the weight and I just, you know, okay.
No, I just wanted, okay.
How many, how many, is only going to be one switch to kill all that?
Yeah, there's, there's one, there's one main switch.
Where's it going to be located?
On that one, I couldn't tie it off by my head.
Okay. So which money you got invested already in this?
I mean, there's ballpark, we renewed the new roofs, I think that was around eight thousand and then we've got the solar panels themselves.
I can tell you the cost of the materials right now.
Didn't you say a hundred something?
No, it says on here the cost of it's a hundred seventy-five.
The cost of the materials are seventy thousand.
You got seventy thousand dollars invested?
There's actually a bill of materials attached to the package there.
Plus the extra amount that they spent on the roof.
You said eighty thousand for the roof?
I think if I'm recalling correctly, around eighty thousand for the new roof and seventy thousand for the materials right now.
I have a question just about panels in general.
Sure.
As time is going on, do you see the panels from an efficiency side becoming more efficient or getting smaller?
Yeah, so.
So that ten years ago, a panel may have been, I don't know, four by four, I mean now they're two by two.
It's happening.
I mean.
That's correct.
As we speak, that's happening.
Yeah.
It's technology like your TV sets and whatever, it is progressing, almost like your cars and electric cars and the batteries are getting better and better and better all the time, yes.
Well, that's, I guess, you know, I know that the town board's looking into the, you know, how did we come up with ten? I think, is, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the number and that's, that's what the code said and, you know, but I'd be more concerned from my standpoint, only my standpoint of location, site, where they are, those, some of those things, but I know we have to follow what's on the, what's on the books right now with that site. You know what I'm talking about, it's in your backyard, you have, you have ten panels lined up in your backyard, kind of like up at the airport, do you ever go by the airport? You see rows and rows and rows and rows of panels. I don't, I'd be more concerned if that was in your backyard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but your actual question was, is the, is the technology changing and the answer to your question is that's.
Yes.
So your square footage. The square footage over time actually decreases, so if you stay at the ten KW cap, over time that footprint of that is going to shrink and shrink and shrink. Just to put that in perspective.
That answers my question, thank you.
That's a good analogy.
Do you know if the.
It's like a microchip, that's the analogy is a good one.
If there has been any headway of things changing where if they waited, they wouldn't have to come before us for this use variance, if they wait and see what's going on with the town?
I know that the town board looked at this issue initially. I know we had public hearings, public input, we had a citizens committee and the ten thousand whatever was the recommendation and that's what was passed. I know that the dentist that came in here a month or two after your meeting came to the town board and asked that the town board reconsider and I think at the time it was mentioned the smaller sizes now of the panels. I know that Dave Reynolds, who's in the audience, at our last meeting, introduced to the board that he is looking into amending our ordinance as it relates to solar energy. And I think he just announced that at the last meeting, so that was a week ago.
So can I ask, so Dave, what would, do you have a suggestion maybe helping us out here because of the strong verbiage in the use variance and do you think it might be to their benefit if they hold off a little or what need it? Or do you think it will be changed at the town board?
Yeah, but he can't, he can't change, he can't change the law nor can he change that criteria to get a use variance.
No, I don't think of use variance, I'm wondering if at the board level, if they're revisiting and changing it, the amount.
Yes, the board can change that and then that would alleviate.
Yeah, and I'm sure you understand the board, your board has got parameters that you have to.
Yeah.
Your question is, where are we in the town board?
Yeah.
As counsel just said, we, I introduced it as a, we're going to look into it. I had a phone conversation just moments before I came in here with another party. One of the questions that I'm asked is, why the ten K, why was the line drawn there? And I have a hard time explaining it, I don't know, I'm sure there was a rationale behind it, whether it was the way it looked or what, I don't know, but as you point out, the technology is changing so that ten KW, ten years ago and ten KW now, there's a marked difference. The other point in terms of technology, there are, you can buy roof shingles now, do your whole roof as a solar array. That's going to be more than ten K, I gotta believe, but again, the technology is changing. I'm not sure that ten K should be the criteria, perhaps the way they, the way it's configured, the, the structure that it's on, how visible is it or is it completely invisible except if you're overhead in a plane, I think those are all factors. I also realize you've got parameters you have to work with, it is a zoning board of appeals. I don't know, I answered your question, but we're working on it and I guarantee you it's not going to happen within the next few months, it's going to take a while.
That did help though, even if it doesn't change it, it does help understanding it.
Thank you.
I do find it, I find it very hard because of those numbers and thinking it might be okay, but hopefully they do revisit it because everyone that comes before us, it's going to become a use and I don't, I think it's hard for anyone to come to a board of appeals to prove this.
Well, I think that, I think they were, the technology is, everybody has kind of said is changing such that, well, maybe on a four by four panels, maybe now a two by two and someday maybe one by one. Okay. Does anybody?
Byron was going to ask something.
Byron.
I, as part of the, the single greatest problem we ever failed or made it yet, but the single greatest problem to use for variance is to show the financial wherewithal, not for your company, but that the property can't produce for use variance. It can't produce some income either as Herb said earlier, the existing use or a, any of the permitted uses within the zone and that's done by a forensic person, which might be an accountant and with the aid of probably an appraiser, they would look at each of them and say it. In your case, but most likely in my own mind is, I'm saying, well, if you use the property in general, like if you look at where use variances were at least looked at, whether rented or not, it's generally, perhaps it's a vacant piece of property. So you can go and you can put the book of means together and you can say what each one is worth and what you can rent it for and you can build a building. In your case, it's complicated because for you to, I mean, what do you have to prove? That you're going to move out, do you have to rent it to somebody else or that you can't afford that cost? For my, I own my own mind, I'm wrestling with a hot handle.
Would it, just so I'm understanding correctly, so if we're, if we're able to produce, if we're producing a monetary dollar from that system being on our building?
Not about the system.
Okay, it's just about the building?
It's about the property itself. The property itself has to prove that its present condition, it can't make a reasonable return. You have an operating business there, it's either making money or it isn't. If you weren't making money, you got one, your first check mark for being in your favor.
So it doesn't make sense because he's not trying to change the business, he's trying to do something.
No, they're trying to.
They went out and made a substantial. They made a substantial adjustment based on a permit that this town gave them and now they're pulling it back. I think they proved the fact through the invoice that they were here and the fact that they, they refurbished those roofs, is they've already invested a certain amount, you know, considerable amount of money for this particular project.
So that's really the basis of our submission for reconsider.
That's what I'm tangling over because of going back and I got to ask the attorney here, is there any legal basis here because?
No, they get it here, they got the permit.
That was my initial thought.
The year ran, that's gone. That is, that's nothing.
So in order to do something, they had to do something within that year.
Sure, they could, they could have built it.
It was, we wish.
They gave us the stop work.
And you're familiar.
Yeah, we actually have a copy of the stop work.
Wait, 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 I got a question.
So once the year ran.
Right.
That building permit's gone, that's a nulity. The other issue that you're wrestling with is, well, gee, the codes officer or whatever issued a permit.
As long as it was on, within that year.
Well, no, but that's the Valley View case where Les Dean erroneously issued a building permit for the guy to go too close to the road. He built it, that went all the way to the appellate division in Rochester and they said, you tear it down, you can't.
Can't move.
The fact that the codes officer made a mistake doesn't destroy the effectiveness of the statute.
I agree. And just one final question if I may ask you, back in 2014, the law was already with the citizens committee and it was already documented?
It was passed, wasn't it?
It was passed.
Yeah, like June.
Six months.
Six months, okay, that's on even though, thank you. So it was actually law at that time.
But they hit a stack, the stop work?
It's in here, I read that, I know.
Joe, when was the stop work order?
Days before the permit expired, I'd say.
And they would have been completed.
The, the request was made at least three days before expiration and the insulation of the panels literally is now more than two or three days tops.
Yeah, no, we, we were weeks, we were a few weeks, we could have had it in.
Well, the actual permit was dated twelve nineteen, two thousand and fourteen, the legal notice, the stop work was December seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, if I go by this.
Yeah, the panels are very quick to install, very quick to install.
It took her a year. I don't know how the record.
That's, the stop work was less than a year.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, December seventeen to December nineteen, it was two days less.
Than one year?
They could have had them in two or three days.
Yes. Legally, I don't see anything wrong with that. We did, right, as far as the time.
If it's that quick.
Because we, we took extra time to get the roof redone, that was one. And then we, at that point in time, had approached the winter. The, so we, it just, it wasn't conducive at the time. And the other thing was trying to line up contractors. So by the time we got the roof done, the next time the contractor that was going to install it could have done it in their time schedule was, was about that time that we were doing it, that's when they were free. So, you know, the things we're trying to balance are getting the materials here and also getting a contractor that's, that can put it in for a reasonable price. So, you know, we're kind of at the mercy of the contractor putting it in, that's why. So, you know, from, from VP Supply's standpoint, we're trying to be a very good, you know, business in the area, we're trying to do things.
Well, you're being good citizens, you're coming to try and do it right.
You know, we, we tried to do it permit, you know, we thought we might, there might be a chance we run over, so we actually called in advance, we just didn't go ahead and do it and say, you know, we'll get it done, no one's going to know the difference. We were trying to be, you know, forthcoming and, and be a good, you know, a good steward to the community in, in the town that we're in. You know, we're obviously trying to make money in our company, any amount of money we can make to help us be profitable is very important.
Well, you're also being a good citizen and using the solar energy to help augment your business. I mean, it's, it's good for everybody, it's just we got a problem with this little.
More than, I believe, that's, oh.
We're with you, a hundred percent.
It's the criteria that we have to follow that's putting a roadblock.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's certainly tough on our end because we've made a pretty significant investment, you know, and it's, you know, we're just saying, can you help us? How do you help us? How do we, how do we, how do we get out of this predicament? I mean, we're in predicament. How do, how do you help us out of it or how, any advice that you could offer would be certainly appreciated.
I was, once I saw the, you know, the parameters of the use variance, I said to Jay, oh Jay, we're wasting our time here, this is, there's no way you could fit into this box that they have here and so forth. So, you know, our approach was let us, at least let them know our circumstances and then, you know, we'll let you guys do whatever you thought made sense from there on, here's all the facts, here's our circumstances, this is why we're here and that's it.
Yeah, we.
Who determines if it's a use or an area?
I researched it through the Association of Towns and I also called John Kent at O'Natty County Planning, who I rely on quite frequently and both said it was definitely a use variance.
And if that ever had to, I'm just curious because I think this is going to come up more often now, if that ever needed to be changed, which it seems like it might because it's almost impossible to prove it.
Right, that's why ninety-nine, ninety percent of use variances are denied.
But I could see some of the others because you're actually opening and you have the possibility of opening different businesses, but to run your energy, I have a discrepancy over if it is, not, not to say, I know your research, but I'm saying whoever makes that decision, should it be a use variance or should it be an area variance?
The unfortunate part about it is I think there's two factors here, what Byron said earlier about the financial statements and the same thing, I think the councilman said so right, we're restricted on what the law is today at ten KW. I think these folks fall into that category where they're outside the box.
Oh, yeah, they basically mentioned it. But getting back, because I wanted to finish that for my, my thought, is there anything after here because I think it's, we as a board are going to be facing this, is there any wonder?
Well, I think Dave's on the right track in terms of possibly changing the ordinance.
Who organizes?
I ask who is the council person that oversees that area?
Rich Woodland.
Rich Woodland? That may be somebody to, at least that we can talk to and try and work with.
I think there is support on the board, I believe, I shouldn't speak for the board, but I think there is.
That somebody, Rich Woodland, is in your district, that's somebody who I would, I was in your shoes, I would be having, tomorrow I'd be calling him up and, and.
So what?
Can his support push this along through the town board?
So you're, what you're recommending, so if I understand correctly, is to go speak to Mr. Woodland and then see if they'll take a vote in the, in the town board?
Well, it's a bigger deal. Yeah, it's a little bigger than that, but, you know.
You'd have someone on your side to push it along with Mr. Reynolds to try to.
I have a question for Dave and Herb if we may, I mean, I'll make you finish.
So if they change, so you're saying there's a possibility that they could change the numbers and then we wouldn't have to be in front of, in front of this board?
But we don't know how long that would take.
We understand the circumstances that you guys are facing as well, so.
Could we ask the town board or legally through the zoning, if we can give a different definition of solar panels by maybe changing it from a use to an area or an area?
I think that's by law, I hope that the town board can.
Well, the reason I say that is because you asked someone for determination.
Yeah.
It wasn't on a face law, was it? Was it on some kind of a face law that?
I don't know what they were relying on, they said it's definitely a use variance, it's not, there's no question.
Who was they?
I talked to the Association of Towns, Laurie Mithen, M I T H E N Demasi, and I talked to John Kent, K E N T, at O'Natty County Planning.
So the town board can't override that?
Maybe people that you might want to also look into yourself to say, we're, you know, you know, I'm not understanding, I'm not really believing this is a true use variance." And they might, you know, they might be changed.
Let me ask you, what is it, what is the process for just modifying or changing the code from small scale to, let's say...
Some, the council person would propose an amendment to the zoning ordinance, either a text or a map amendment. The board would then make a determination as to whether they wanted to go forward with that. And what they would do is they'd schedule a public hearing for a local law, because they'd have to pass a local law, amend our code. And that would be a month down the road for the public hearing. And at the public hearing, the board could either grant the amendment, they could defer on it for further information, or they could deny.
Sure.
And we've had several, we've got five or six of them coming up at our next meeting because we're cleaning up the code with some type of graphic layers that Joe found in the code. So it's, it's done.
Okay. Is there anything we can do to participate in that process or to help enhance the...
I'd be glad to sit down and work with you. I, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I think it needs, this needs some tweaking. I would defer to Joe. The state has put out a model code. I don't know exactly how that fits, but I think we can work it out. I do.
It sounds like this group really doesn't have an issue whatsoever, whatsoever. It's just that the circumstances are such that there's limits to what you can do on that. And I mean, in general, just, I think changing that code makes a lot of sense for any city in America. I mean, we're in a global economic competition and it's, the competition is fierce out there, as you guys all know, you know? And now for us, VP Supply, we're a distributor of plumbing, heating, renewable energy, kitchens, baths and so forth. We're not competing with Amazon that we don't even know where they're from, but like, you know, it's gonna, everybody's gonna face these changes of technology and so forth. So we need to all be in position to fight these forces back to basically preserve ourselves, whether it's in Hartford or Utica or Rochester, Buffalo and so forth. And, you know, and anything we can do to help somebody to reconsider this code, we'd like to...
You probably will be able to go, go and use that discussion at the board, at the town board meeting.
Especially when they have a hearing.
Okay.
Because it's also difficult for us to wanna help and feel like our hands are tied as well.
One of the conversations with the, the representative on the town board prior to that, I, that's what I was, now, I guess I would have to ask at this point, do you wanna proceed with our hearing right now and, and have us go through the, yeah, just proceed as normal? That's, that's kinda, I'll leave that, I'll leave that up to the applicant, so who...
I don't know what that means.
He's asking if he'd like us to let them continue with the vote.
We're gonna either approve or disapprove.
Yeah, I mean, I, it has to do with what you have to do or another, or another...
Well, that might be helpful if they get a...
Just double... What do you recommend?
Why, if he gets, if he does get denied, would that be detrimental to him?
It could be tabled.
Yeah, so, I agree with that.
Let's table it.
And the only reason I, the only reason I can agree with that, because it's a double edged sword. If they don't pursue it, it can get home back in their face that they didn't care. And if they do and it gets shot down, it goes, it's a double edged sword. I just got the good idea, just table it.
I think it's tabled.
Okay.
You need a motion to table a second and...
I'll do a motion to table.
Could I? You wanna say something first?
I do. I'd like to go through the criteria first and then if you still wanna make your motion to table, I'd certainly second it. Uh, but this way they'll hear the, the criteria for a use variance and then they'll know the ones that they already have in their favor when they're talking to the town board. Or if they come back to us, they'll know what they need to fix. So it'll kinda send them in a direction to come back.
Okay. I withdraw my motion then. Okay?
I have, this may sound like an ignorant question, but...
No question is ignorant.
I do have a concern. Does anything that we face here get passed on to the town to feel, I, I, I'm gonna speak for myself, that I think we're going to run into this over and over again now. And I think it's something that does need to look, be looked at and so I would like that in the minutes because I don't know if...
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that the town board is well aware of the situation. I think that they, I know that they are working on it right now actively. And I don't know how quick, you know, how quick that can happen, but I think the more individuals like yourselves that contact your representative and let them know that this is important and that it's an important issue that needs to be addressed in a timely fashion.
Mr. Karen, I'd like to, with my alone from UFA, I still would like Karen's motion to go forward because I think the criteria is gonna be different on each application that comes forward. And I think if the gentleman wants to retract it, I would retract it and pursue the avenues that we're not giving them, but suggesting them to go through your councilman and then come back or go through the councilman to the town board. But I think if we give you a criteria, we're gonna base it on what you've got here now. There might be some denials there that you might want, go ahead. I'm sorry, it's your motion.
No, no, go ahead.
No, no, it's your, go ahead. Shut your hand. I like that, though, hand up.
Anyway, I just wanted to ask our legal counsel, I mean, you know, sometimes the, the, the applicant only asks for an advisory opinion, so to speak, you know, what it is they need and we just tell them, right?
Oh, yeah, and I think informally, that's, I think what Byron was trying to have you do was informally...
Right.
Express your feelings...
Exactly.
With the idea that then it's gonna be tabled so that they know...
I mean, we already know that they have to show financial documentation, which we don't have that here. So there's no reason going through the criteria. It fails immediately because that's not here.
I've got one more thing to add, if you don't mind. So from a time sen, time sensitive standpoint, we are, we made, you know, we, we've struggled with how to try to fit in the confines here, so we're here today. The issue we're facing currently is that we have a grant that was awarded to us by NYSERA, the New York State Research and Development Accord. And that is, that is expiring. We have to return that money back if we don't put this in...
How much is it?
It's $55,000.
What's the expiration date?
The expiration date has gone...
It's 47,075% down.
Okay, so you're right.
That's okay.
But when do you have to return it if not used?
So we have applied for multiple extensions.
And what, what do you have right now?
And this is, this is the last extension that they're going to allow us?
And what, what is the timeframe left on it?
I think it, you know, it should be a matter of weeks.
Based on the outcome of this meeting, this really...
Yeah, so...
Okay, I have a question. Does it have to be for the amount that you originally are requesting or could you use their money towards the 10K? Yeah, 10?
No, so, no, they have a process...
The grant would be on the budget.
Yeah, so two, two things to consider. One is we can't just throw the money that, that way it would be a new project. We have to resubmit.
Right, you have to get another grant.
And then the grant amount today versus the grant amount that we were awarded back when we first got it is a lower level.
And you have it used anyway, the grant money.
We, we have, if it is a reserve and we lose that money, we don't use it.
Yeah, that's tough, but you know...
That's a bigger deal.
Proceed, you know, that's a whole separate issue, right? And the point is...
So what you're really, you're the attorney.
It's not, I don't think it's a separate issue, right? I think it's all, I like to hear the articles of the financial hardship.
You're, you're the attorney. What, what is that?
Well, I mean, I think, I think we, I mean, I hate to say it, but if there's only weeks left on the money, we're not gonna, unless we do an emergency meeting or something, but you'd still have to, you, you, what you, what you really need is, you need somebody to bring this forward for you, showing, and I, what I was wondering is, now that they're in this predicament, now perhaps there is some financial hardship that will take place should they not get, now they're losing that money. They, I mean, now we're starting to pile up some financial things, but I don't know what, we need to know how much you're...
But isn't the law commensurate where at this point?
Yeah, there is, but, but I'm saying there's no, we, we don't have anything to work with. We don't know how much, you know, money you make, first of all. You know, they, there was on the sheet, it's somewhere, you, you were supposed to fill out actually, almost like a tax return, right? We need a tax return, a current, a matter of fact, probably a few years' tax returns. And we had some kind of form here that was completely empty. We didn't have any...
Yeah.
Documentation. I, I forgot where it was, but it's on the application.
It's here, it's, it's completely blank.
Right, there's actually nothing filled out. So we have no idea if, you know, if you really, or this, or even what's happening now, present, here it is, right here, where it says NA, Not Applicable, Applicant's Provider of Financial Evidence Date. So this would all need to be filled out. You probably need somebody who, you know, could financially explain, you have to show a unique hardship, right? If this is not granted, what will happen? In other words, your company will collapse, something like that.
Well, no.
And if they can't show it though, I think going a step further, I would love to talk to the people who are calling this a use variance because at this time, we're not gonna get anything done with that right now. Why couldn't they approach someone very quickly? Well, you have somebody right here since saying he would work with them. No, I don't mean within the board. I'm talking about the verbiage that if we, if, if we didn't have to vote on this as a use variance, I think we could pass it. How long that's gonna happen though? How long is that gonna take? Or are we definitely correct? Did we get the right interpretation? I don't know, but I think that's gonna take a long time before we get something changed.
Herb, am I right? It is, but that's why you're better off tabling it. At least they'll have something to tell the grant people that we've made the applications before board.
That's what I see.
It was tabled for additional documentation.
A denial is worse than...
Well, the denial is worse. I think once you say it was denied, then you say...
I think it makes sense to...
Your whole background is your vision of your motion.
Well, and maybe, maybe with the, whoever you're dealing with at the state and the grant could maybe at least place, if they had a talk with somebody...
NYSDR, the incentive.
Yeah, could place a call to the, to Joe and he could say, "At least this is where we are in the process." And maybe get that...
We'll find that out tomorrow. I think that if we convey what took place here, they may reconsider. We don't know what, we have to do something.
What? I'd like to call for a vote to table it.
I'll renew my motion.
Look, before we do that, does anybody have another question for the applicant at all? Let's, let's make sure that we, okay. Oh, is anybody, is anybody in the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? Okay. So I'll go back then, I guess, to Karen.
I'll renew my motion to table the entire matter.
Motion made. Karen, to table it.
I'll second it.
Second it.
Aye.
Good.
I'd rather vote for it, but that's not the motion on the table.
That's not the motion on the table.
So you're voting against...
So if, so if, no, I'm not gonna vote against, against the table on it, I, I'll, I'll vote to table it.
Okay.
Table it.
Aye. Aye.
Seven.
So we voted.
Did we give you a direction?
Speak to our representative.
Yeah.
Plus call, call...
I'd also look into myself, I would be pushing to see, is this really, so, we're bound to it, but I would, if, if I were in your position, I would do further investigation to say, how, I would want someone to tell me, how is this a use variance?
Can I go over this total cost with you one more time?
Sure.
So 178, 750.
Yep.
47, 750 is coming from the incentive.
Correct.
Now, is those figures from 2014 or current figures?
Those were at time of application. Then that was the grant that was issued by NYSERA.
At that time?
Yes.
Have you done a cost analysis to see if the total cost has varied since then to now? Since we know that technology has changed and all that?
No, the thing is, is the materials were already procured and we have...
All the materials were already procured?
Yes.
Just the labor may go off.
So you may have outdated material by now. Well, it's... I'm, I'm saying that, but realistically, the way the technology has changed, we're talking, you know, two and a half years.
And that's, that's also the problem is that we, we can't, we have it, no one else wants it.
Not only that, but I think, don't you have to stipulate the materials that you're using in NYSERA?
Yeah, we do. Yes, you do.
And so forth. So, but economically, we wanna use what we want.
Sure.
Because we, it's hard, because of technology changes, that, you know, is impaired in the market, it's still useful for what we wanna do with it.
Yeah.
So we'd like to be able to use that.
As a board member, I gotta say this personally, I think you're better off tableing it and handling it the way you're gonna handle it. Because you have some reasons in here that I see that I think you can go forward, especially with some people in this room that have just heard our conversation.
All right, well, we do appreciate your time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Joe?
Okay. The application of AJ Signs for York Tentacle LLC, 4454 Pillar Row Moon Hardproof. This is a Hanover Plaza. The applicant is removing a large section of the existing nylon sign, updating it and replacing it in time. The sign exceeds the maximum lot size of 128 square feet by 21 plus or minus square feet. Therefore, the applicant is seeking a 21 plus or minus square foot area variance. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Schumaker. I'm the project manager from AJ Signs.
Can I give you a name again?
Bridgette Schumaker for the AJ Signs.
Thank you.
Representing the property.
You're representing the property or AJ Signs?
I'm for making a sign, but I'm the project manager on that.
The question I've got, and I think I know the answer, the sign that you're proposing to put up, is that the exact size of the existing sign that you're gonna take down?
So the posts and the hardware box are all original. What we're doing is replacing the aluminum skins that you see here, so we're taking down What we're doing is replacing the aluminum skins that you see here, so we're taking down all this aluminum, replacing the new aluminum, this box is the same size as this box, and we're adding an additional box here.
The size is not going to.
Nope, it's not going to.
The size has changed.
As far as, well, I guess say footprint, everything stays the same.
Yeah, the footprint is the same.
Nothing changes.
Exactly.
We just want to move something around, really.
Yes, essentially, we're, we're adding this cabinet here.
What about the lighting?
It's all LED, so it will be consistent, it'll be softer to the human eye, but it is significantly more energy efficient than the.
Is the sign going to be on all my long doors, or is it?
Um, it's whatever the time clock is set at now, it'll be consistent with what they're doing now.
Okay, so you're not changing them?
Yes.
Well, that must be a non-conforming sign now, presently.
Presently, it's, I believe.
If it is, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
It has a.
Because we're not just moving things around.
Right, I believe, Joe, this currently has variance on it for the size, or it's not, or it's conforming at the size that it is currently.
No, it's definitely non-conforming, it's about 28 square feet larger.
Okay.
You're not making it any bigger.
Right, well, we are making it larger by 21 square feet, and that's why we're in front of you today. But we're not taking the posts out of the ground, so we're essentially using the same steel structure that's there. We're just removing the deteriorating aluminum and paint structure, the old fluorescent lamps, things like that. And then we're adding that additional cabinet, which equates to an additional 21 square feet to what's there now.
Where's the, where's the additional 21 square feet?
That's this cabinet here.
But in terms of, but in terms of area here, between here and here.
Yep.
It's the same, between here and here, is that the same?
No, it's not.
So you're not increasing the size?
No, all we're doing is we're taking this, like this cabinet here, we're making a new one, because this was deteriorated.
And you're going to put it in there.
It's, this one's getting moved down, and a new one's going here.
So there is no increase in size.
No, this is larger, the second sign is larger than what's there, instead of four.
Larger than what was in there now, when it's not taking up any more square footage.
Right, so we're allowing, we're able to get all of the tenants.
Non-conforming signs.
It's a non-conforming sign.
It was not working out.
And there's no change to the non-conforming sign.
And the new format will allow all of the various tenants, whether they're small mom and pops or the major retailers, to all be visible on this sign.
Yeah.
At, at a reasonable distance for traffic to slow down.
Because they're not all there now, right?
Right, nope, they're not all there now. He has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, he has 14, 15.
So let me ask you the question again, right now, how many square feet of sign is there?
Currently, you've got 90 plus 58.5, which is 148.5.
And when you get done, how many do you have?
148.5 plus 21, so 100 and.
169.5.
She's adding the interior, the exterior is the same, the interior is just being readjusted.
Yeah.
For more names.
Right, the sign.
And one larger.
The panels are changing in size in between the two colors.
The sign's not getting taller, and it's not getting wider, it's, what you're going to see in the difference.
It's going to be at the bottom.
Is on the bottom, the clearance underneath the sign will be, there's a three foot difference.
Okay, there, there's a problem in this variance then.
Okay.
You represented the old sign is 58 plus 90, at 148 square feet.
That's correct.
The new sign is represented the same size, 58 and 90.
58, 90, plus the 21, which is here overage.
Which is the 169.5.
Yep. The drawing that you're looking at doesn't have the 21 called out, but you did call it out, two estimateds on your letter.
All right, but then, if you're at 148 square feet now, you're already 20 over the, the maximum, so it'd be 20 plus 21.
Which would be 189.5.
It'll be 42.
Because the notice said they're seeking a 21 foot plus or minus square foot area variance.
In addition to what had already been given.
Well, what Joe is saying, it's 90 by 58, which comes to 148.5, the 21 that you're asking for comes to 169.5. What Joe's saying now, are you saying it needs another additional 20? I thought that 20 was built into the 90.
She's at 148 now, she's already 20 square feet over the limitation, if she adds another 121 feet, she'll be 41 square feet.
Yeah, which I got.
Your sign was already a non-conforming sign. Yeah, but you got to go back to what the ordinance allows.
So that would make it over 40 feet.
And the way it was represented on this drawing, I thought the new one was 148.
Oh, that's what I.
She may have re-adapted wrong.
That's what I thought.
So it's really.
It's just the.
It was re-adapted wrong.
It's really a correction in numbers, but it really doesn't change what's there, or.
The footprint doesn't change.
Right, your footprint, you're absolutely correct, the footprint still doesn't change. What we're doing is we're rehabilitating the existing structure, so you minimize construction, to minimize the costs.
Well, do we have to actually go back to public notice then, I'm wondering?
Yeah, it's wrong by 20 feet.
Wrong.
It's wrong, right? Public notice during that should be publicized again?
I agree.
It's, yes.
It's because it has to give notice to the public that they can come out and discuss it, so if it's not accurate.
It's like we lied to the public by giving the wrong number. Yeah, but they lose them on.
Let's just bear, let's hope we don't.
In four hours.
Maybe I can come up with a solution, I got to ask the zoning officer that.
Let's see if we can find a solution.
Well, not a solution, but possibly an answer, you're telling me that the sign is 90 by 58?
The existing sign, you've got two cabinets, one is 58, one is 90.
So if we add that up, it's 148. My question to the zoning department now is, is that 148 totaled in the non-conforming size right now? So she's sitting there.
Legal non-conforming sign size, correct.
So.
She's going for an additional 21 feet, or 41 feet.
Because it reverts back to.
Over the ordinance, over ordinance, she's really not getting that extra percent. Because I think some people, when they hear it, they think, oh, she was.
Well, no, she's got to apply for the total 40 feet.
Okay, I mean, this is a, we're requesting an additional 21 square feet over what's here.
Right, but it was a non-conforming use.
So it's going to be noticed again?
Yeah.
So it's really 40 something feet, right?
Correct, okay.
That's the old.
Do we, you just came over, if it wasn't.
Notice probably.
Notice probably, if we didn't tell the.
Who were you looking at starting? If, if it was to be granted tonight, when would you have looked at starting?
As soon as the permit is issued. The facade rehabilitations are almost complete at that capacity, and they're going through and doing repaving and things like that. So this is really, you know, kind of one of those final components in cleaning up the property and attracting tenants and bringing additional tax bases in, so they're, they're really putting a lot of weight on me to come out here tonight and get this.
Are all those panels filled?
They will be, yes.
They're already taken, because I, I see something here.
No, there are still vacancies there.
Can we remove it, and not put that and put up your save more sign, by doing that?
Well, this one, we're not going to take out, I can take off, I mean, I can lose some square footage off the bottom if these panels is somewhat smaller, which gets us within our.
I don't know if that's going to change the application either.
Yeah, it does. Do it in accordance with the application, and leave it at 148 square feet.
That's what I'm saying.
Still 20 square feet more than the ordinance allows.
You follow what we're saying?
So we ha, I'd have to take 20 square foot off of this cabinet in order to get it upgraded tonight.
Back to 148.5, or whatever the.
148.
Does she have what she already has?
She does have 148.
She already has 148, so she's gaining nothing.
She's gaining.
Yeah, but then what you could do, as long as they got vacancies.
But she could take the sign down then, and rebuild it without losing the right.
I like to hear if there's anybody in the audience, those kind of complaints or whatever.
If there's.
Yes, I've got some questions.
You said her long enough, right?
Mr. Chairman and Board, I'm Gail Eaglehair, and I live right behind at 47 Imperial Drive. And the neighbors at 47, on Imperial Drive have had a lot of issues with Hannaford. They expanded, they have closer to us, and we have garbage trucks, and we have deliveries all night long. Lights come in to the bedroom windows, so what I want to know is, is this whole thing going to be lit? Because right now, this top part is not lit, am I correct?
No, it's all illuminated.
It is right now?
It may not be currently working, because a lot of the sign is, needs to be lit.
So this, so this whole, is it okay that I'm asking you? So this whole 90, or however many feet this is, top to bottom, that you're proposing, is all going to be lit?
It'll, it'll all be lit, it's not any larger than what it is now, overall height and everything. So it's not going to be any taller than the building or anything like that.
But it's all going to be lit?
And it'll be turned off at the time of night, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so this, this, there's not going to be any additional lighting here than there was over here? Because these, these center ones right now, I don't think are lit.
They're supposed to be, the, the signs.
Well, okay, my concern is the people behind.
The new landlord has come, the gentleman who purchased the property is doing a lot of work there, and this sign is, was poorly maintained before he came in, so it needs a lot of.
Okay, so the.
So that's what you're seeing, it not lit now, but it will be lit, but it will be on a time clock.
Okay, so my concern.
So it won't be on your bedroom windows.
That's my concern, and the people on both sides of you, we were just having a conversation yesterday about this, that anything that's, that may be higher than the building itself is going to be shining, right? In our bedroom light. I am behind it, so if this is going to be.
It's not going to be taller than it is now.
But right now, it's not lit, so I can't tell if it's going to, once you light it, whether it's going to be.
This isn't taller than the building.
So that's not going to be shining behind.
No, the sign's not going to be taller at all.
This board has the right to tell the her, or the applicant, what time we can turn the light off if we wish.
We would appreciate it.
We can grant the variance at a 10 o'clock or a 12 o'clock midnight if we wish, we can consider that here, as far as that.
We would appreciate that, because I know, I did come to the town board here years ago on the, the garbage dumpsters at 3 o'clock in the morning banging and all that stuff, and the sign was put up, and they still come. I mean, we, it was very frustrating for all the neighbors.
Unfortunately, I only represent the landlord.
Well, I understand it, I understand it, and so, but if this board can some way limit the lighting at night, so it doesn't affect the folks behind.
I have a, I have a question, you said that it's going to be LED lit, is that, from a sight perspective, is that any brighter, not brighter, I mean, in your opinion, from what we've seen so far?
I know, it, it's, it's difficult to explain in words, but have you switched on any light bulbs in your home?
Yeah.
Okay, to LED light bulbs? So it's, it's brighter, right, for reading, but it's softer, does that make sense? So it, yes, it's brighter so that you can read it and it's legible, but it's softer on your eyes. So it's not a glaring light, it's a soft white, so that.
Illuminating.
It's illuminating, what LED light, so what fluorescents do, like in this room? And I don't know if any of you.
Driving crazy.
Does anyone else wear any contacts other than me? So these lights reflect off the edges of my contacts, and they're driving me crazy right now. But, so these direct light, like this, right, that's where you can see lights in these lights. Whereas LEDs, they project like this, so they spread the light evenly, and that's what gives you a brighter short range, because it's spreading the light like this, it's, it's not going long, right? So essentially, yes, when you're this close, you have a brighter, it's easier to read for legibility, but it's a softer glow versus the harsh environment that you get with fluorescents or neon.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and in this section here, it self-adjusts to ambient lighting. So if you have a cloudy day, or you have, even as night, you know, the, the evening air sets, that it softens its illumination itself. And in the daytime, when the sun is directly on it, it readjusts and brightens up so that you can actually see it legibly.
But the sign faces up and down, it's all, yeah, that's all, okay.
We're not moving it, we're not moving it, we're not making it bigger.
From what I understand from you, you live behind the shopping center.
We live behind, but I can't tell right now if, if it would shine on our houses, because it's not lit right now. So, but the ones that are shining must be, they must have lights on behind the shopping center? They do, they do. So find out who to, because that's probably what you're seeing. Well, I tried years ago, you know, before you were on this board, trust me, and Dory knows, coming, you know, with problems with Hannaford, and they really have not been mindful of the convenience of the neighbors. So I just want to be sure we're not going to have additional lights that are going to be all night long.
Right, and the overall height of the sign is only about 22 feet, the building is taller than 22 feet. So you, from your house on the back side, you can't see over the building to the sign.
Okay, well, because, I mean, that's my only concern, Mr. Chairman, so, otherwise, I don't have any problems with what they're doing, you know, but.
I'm a little curious, I'm getting off the application a little bit, but the lighting that's, well, yeah, the lighting, is it, spotlights in the back of the building that are shoot out towards here?
I have to keep my, I have to keep, and my neighbors too, we were just talking yesterday, have to keep our shades drawn all night long. So like in the summertime, if you wanted to open them to get fresh air and stuff, you can't. Between the lights and the garbage dumpsters and the deliveries, and because they've expanded the back of that shopping center of the Hannaford closer to us from when we first bought our property.
You know, there's a simple solution to that, and I'm not sure why we don't do it.
Just sell it, move to Florida, right?
No, no, the simple solution is motion detection lighting. And basically, if there's a truck coming in, and it's going to be dumping behind there, whatever, delivering stock, getting garbage, it triggers on a motion detection light, and we should talk to the owner, I know we're getting off of the subject, but it's done all over, because as soon as that truck moves away, it goes back to darkness.
Right, and it's, it's the noise too, so I did talk, and I was in front of the board, and I was, I did a lot of legal work on it. But we got a sign posted back there about no deliveries.
There's been some vandalism back there too, but that also motion detection, we'll catch that.
Well, we had, there's a sign posted back there, no deliveries during certain time tonight, and they don't, they just ignore it. So I just gave up, they wore me down, and I gave up fighting on that one. I just want to be sure we're not adding more.
There's a problem.
And if, you know, I'm assured it's not going to be any taller, then we should be okay, but just wanted the board to know my concerns.
Appreciate the cameras, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, what else, I guess?
When I.
So basically, I was going to say, if you made all these, and I'm not sure the numbers, okay? But there's 14 panels there, from what everybody was telling me.
Yeah, there's 14.
So if you cut two inches off of each of the panels, you don't need that.
Yeah, I do have a rendering here.
Well, I think she said that the panels are made already, or no?
No.
Oh, okay.
So we, we don't build anything until we got.
Well, what I'm saying, if you, if you made them panels, each of 14 of them.
If we drop them down to 12 inches, I think I can, I can push it up and.
And then, what was in the paper, will we make it legal?
Yes, I have that rendering here.
That's all right, yeah.
It would, it would only be asking for 12, but what I thought was, imagine the existing square footage, not realizing that there was a miscount.
We are, but we still need to grant the 20 additional feet or 20 to 20. What I'm saying is.
For this rendering.
That's what I want to know.
For additional.
Right, is it, is this accurate, what was represented to the public?
That's why I said take some stuff off. I was thinking, are we just talking? Is it two inches? I guess you can't, I'm not sure. Joe's calculating it now.
I mean, you can't, you can't say that, Jack.
Jack, sometimes you're one.
You said you guessed that.
What was the word?
They don't generate the electricity, no.
I still feel that you need to report everybody, I can go around this town and show you probably six to eight of these panels that are up there illegally right now. John, see them now. You should go back to school and get it, because that's good back on. But no, you know, in the Northeast, it's snow, they calculate the signals in, based on the amount of electric, amount of sunlight that is generated in this particular area, which is not very good. This area is not conducive to a lot of the last one. No, I got a lot of, yeah, that's where. And Jerry called my, right back, what's his name, the accountant there?
I don't care. Zoning planning, you tell me.
No, can't be serious. They're on you.
But you got to remember, it's possible.
On the first down, on the street view. Are you on a period?
It's supposed to generate.
What number? 67, right?
Oh, what did you say, on the corner, right in the corner, where you did all the landscaping from? Although those bushes, we had talked about those bushes, did you? We've got a lot of trouble. I'm sorry, put them in, that was, they're being replaced, you would have to.
Yeah, sure, we got one, we're going to replace again. James and Freddie.
I hope they didn't charge you.
They didn't charge us the second time, but then the third time we wanted to, and so we switched to somebody else. And we still have one.
I had a tree that I put in the back where fences, my fence and my neighbor's fence comes together, so right in the corner, put a tree in the back. Before they went to a landscaping, died, they replaced. It's like a hard die. They, they wanted to charge me, and so I went to the road.
1990, we got one.
Same kind of tree, it's growing like crazy.
So much for the land.
Yeah, so really.
But you don't get, you don't have down to give, to give the noise.
Sticker man.
You get the noise.
And I never see it from the highway. The tree musketeers.
I spent months on the ladder, they were from the boards, I'll need to try to guess, are we limiting it? The trucks, you can't turn to the left.
My dog's home, 1:00 in the morning. You hear the bang.
They got 70,000 calories.
There used to be a young woman living, not too far from you, closer to the other.
Second house in Front Regal, I know.
Towards me. Um, we have little kids.
They've already been granted once.
They thought they were.
We've already been granted.
From the noise. And they don't even pay attention to the sign that you're watching.
No, they don't, they just.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to.
Wait, we can read with Joe. Okay. Okay, I have a rendering that meets what was sent out in the paper, and meets 148 square feet. So you don't have to put out another notice.
Okay, what, what does that include?
I'm going to redo that, and Byron, we're going to go with your suggestion, your thought, okay? So, ready, here's the recap.
What was your suggestion?
We're going to find out, we're going to find out.
The existing sign has two components, you have the Hannaford panel at the top, which equates to 90 square feet, and then you have the ten, what we call the tenant cabinet, which equates to the 58.5 square feet. So the new, the new sign has the Hannaford cabinet, same size, then it has the digital, and then it has the tenant cabinet. This cabinet here is 90 square feet, 90 square feet, 58, 58.
When you say here, what do you mean?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the.
The old sign here, yep, is 90, here is 90.
The top part is? The top part is...
The top part is 58.5, top part is 58.5. So it is like for my, we're still within what was posted at 21 square feet variance based on the pre-existing non-conforming use. So we're all within the non-conforming. So we're just repeating, like extending the non-conforming, isn't it?
The 21 feet.
The 21 feet, yep. And then Byron's suggestion is, in the future, when the additional tenants are signed, we'll come back before you and ask for additional space.
You don't go on the bottom anyway?
Yeah, and they'll go down here at the bottom, exactly.
That's if you're ready.
If I'm granted, and I will say, pretty please.
That makes sense.
So I have, and we can put on here the times that you would like the sign turned off.
Do we have any thoughts about that?
Would Terry go off the sign?
You'd have to change it.
What times did it open till?
That, I honestly...
Hannaford stays open till midnight most nights. They're not open 20 hours.
So you need to leave it a little after for their employees, right?
I don't think so. We got parking lot lights.
Yeah, as I said, typically, from my experience with other shopping centers, we usually go with the earliest opening to the latest opening, which is your typical grocery store, they usually have the, the longest hours. Do you want me to Google what Hannaford's hours are? Or do you wanna just write on here that it needs to follow Hannaford's hours?
Let's say, I'm gonna cap it at midnight. Unless we want, I'd rather cap it.
Midnight?
Yeah, there's very few people in there.
So off at midnight and on at...
Yeah, the on, I don't care.
Dust, probably, I mean, dusted on, no, it's a...
Well, as I say, dawn's hard because if Hannaford opens at 5 and the sign's not coming on, so dawn at 8 in the winter.
Well, in the summer or in the winter, you know, it doesn't get light till 7:30, so it's gotta be on.
So you wanna say off 5?
I'm not gonna give you a front end.
Okay, so just off at midnight and then on at business opening?
Yes, recorded.
Okay.
It's gonna be put in the motion.
We will, but we gotta go through the criteria and we gotta... And we may have some more questions from anybody in the audience.
You gotta get a lawyer, you know? You're gonna need a name tag, you're gonna be like, Gail, come on down.
She's the only one left for you.
I can get any calls out of this.
At least we're listening, Gail.
You are, you are, I'm impressed.
No calls in, only people up there.
I hope they help you look behind.
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
I know, and I, again, like I said, I don't represent Hannaford, I don't work for Hannaford, so I have no weight with Hannaford whatsoever. I'll circulate these people.
Yeah, there's gotta be noise ordered.
The town board doesn't even, they put a sign up. The town, he had a sign told him to put a sign up. Say, how are you?
I don't have any more questions.
No, I was also, I was also with the...
All right. Before we go through the, before we go through the criteria, just for the record, we have, we have a response from the New York State DOT. They do not have it until the accident report. And we have a response from the American Department of Planning. No recommendation.
How about that?
Your notes are out here later.
Yes, I'm gonna pick that one. But I was just circulating to make sure.
Now, do we wanna take a look at the criteria? Hannaford is actually open only until 10:00. Yeah, I think that's even right, too.
You're still there?
So you wanna do their hours?
No wonder they're throwing them up.
No, they changed it, they used it.
You're right.
They changed it.
I would do their hours.
Do you wanna do it based on Hannaford's business hours?
Are they the last retail establishment?
I would...
I would imagine so, I don't think...
It might, it's... The people go...
I mean, if they put in a restaurant, if there's a restaurant there...
It's open.
Yeah.
It's there.
It might be nice for our restaurant patients, patrons of the...
They would probably want their sign.
The lighting has...
Yeah, but there's lights in a parking lot, too.
Yeah, but if you're a patron, you kinda wanna, I mean, you're not gonna wanna go into a parking lot.
The parking lot's light, it is well lit all night long.
Lit enough as a light.
You're gonna do a lot of...
I forgot one more question. You gave us this here, so this existing sign.
Yes.
Is any of the new sign going lower than this?
Not with that drawn.
That's what I wanna make sure. So we're not going, we're not extending it down, right?
Right, hold on. Yes, it is, it's coming down slightly.
21 feet.
Wait, no, because the 21 feet is within the sign because it's very...
Oh, no, you know what, you're right, you're right, not on this one, no, not on this one.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, not on this one.
Pretty sure, one more time, not on this one.
Okay, Jerry, what was, what was that you were saying?
The question was, from the old sign that we have, as we can see here, that's illustrated, the additional signs are not gonna go any lower than the existing sign. Because if this is 148.5, this has gotta be 188.5.
Yeah, I got that.
Actually, no, I'm sorry, I'm gonna retract that. The existing sign, the tenant cabinet measures 10 foot this way, 9 foot this way.